Actually, two separate meetings. One is a public hearing, which we have three items on that agenda. Once we close out the public hearings, then we will open our council workshop. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to our city attorney, Rob Wilmot, and he will begin to conduct those public hearings. We also have agendas back here on the podium if you'd like to get one so you can follow along. So Rob, I'll turn it over to you.
First, I'd like everybody to know that we have the City of Tifton's written public hearing procedures, the City of Tifton's standards for exercising zoning powers, as well as a copy of the Georgia's conflict of interest law that's available upon request. The first public hearing we are at is application number PP 24-0001. These are proposed amendments to the city's land development code for non-emergent medical transport service and non-emergent transport vehicles. This time, I'd like to ask the council of conflict questions. Have any of these applicants or opponents to the application contribute at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
None.
None.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning, reclassification of the property, or proposed text amendment, whether it's a positive or negative impact?
None.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by a proposed rezoning, reclassification, whether that be a positive or negative impact?
None.
All right, I'd like this time to ask Crystal Gaylor, Department of Community Development, to come up and let everybody know what this text amendment is about.
Perfect, thank you. I did not realize it'd be so small on the screen, but we'll go along. City staff have composed a draft ordinance with updates to land development code related to the regulation of non-emergent medical transport services. We get regular inquiries from businesses that want to know where non-emergent medical transport services can locate. We've gotten several within the past 12 months alone. This use is not defined on the table of uses currently. So when a use is not defined, the manager, the planning and zoning director, the city manager, we put the uses as close as we can to something that has similar characteristics. So a similar service, similar hours of operation, similar impacts on neighboring properties. And so what you see on the screen is two uses that would be similar to this one in certain ways. So we have private-for-profit, profit ambulance services, and these are allowed to locate in heavy industrial and wholesale light industrial. And then we have taxi offices. And it sounds like it would not be a good comparison, but taxi offices, they are vehicle-for-hire. So they have office headquarters where their vehicles are stored. And when somebody calls for them, they grab that vehicle, they go get folks, they get them to where they need to go, and they return back to base. It's a decent fit to put it in taxi service or taxi offices, but we felt that this, since we're getting enough inquiries about it, we wanted to go ahead and add it to the table of uses and propose some standards so that we can make sure that it was a good fit for neighboring properties. Go to the next one. So in proposing something to go on the table of uses, you also have to give it a definition so we'll know that it fits. And you give it standards, and you define which districts that it needs to locate in. So these are the proposed definitions. I won't read them aloud to you. We can provide a copy to anybody that would like a copy of them. But we have the service itself, and then we have the vehicle. And Stephen, you'll go to the next one. Perfect. And then where they're allowed to locate. So the proposed draft ordinance puts them in residential professional, neighborhood commercial, general business, wholesale light industrial, and heavy industrial. To the next one. All right, perfect. And then these are the proposed standards to make sure that these services would be a good fit. The service shall comply with all state of Georgia licensing requirements. Off-street parking, there shall be one space per fleet vehicle and one space per on-shift employee. Parking of all medical transport vehicles located in the residential professional zoning districts are limited to the side and rear yards only. For locations that are adjacent to a residential zoning district, R8, R10, R12, R14, or R20, parking lots shall be screened using a fence or wall on all sides bordering such zoning districts. Said fence or wall shall be limited to wood, brick, stone, concrete, concrete block with architectural treatment, or other architecturally engineered facades. And it shall be a minimum of six feet in height. And the hours of operation are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the residential professional zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on January 8, 2024, and unanimously recommended approval of the draft ordinance.
All right, at this time, I'd like, is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Mayor Council, I see no public comment. I ask that public hearing be closed.
I have a question.
Sure.
One quick question. I didn't see anything, Crystal, in the paperwork relating to signage. Did I just overlook that? So would there be signage, would be permitted or not permitted?
Unless we add it to the standards, it would just fall under the regular sign ordinance.
Of whatever district they're in, zoning district?
Yeah, so like pole signs would be limited to general business districts and things like that.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you. Any other gentleman? Okay, that's it. Thank you, Rob.
All right. All right, the next zoning, you know, we have is application number PP 24-0002. It's submitted by Jay Zhang and Annie Yan, requesting to remove the planned development overlay for Fair Lake Estates, currently known as Red Bird Mobile Home Park at 1040 Fair Lake Road, map and parcel number T069-051. Again, I'd like to ask the conflict question. The council, have any of the applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
None.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of the property, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
None.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning, reclassification of the property, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
None.
None.
All right, again, I'd like to ask Crystal Gaylor to come up and inform council what this application is about.
Go ahead and go to the next one, Stephen. Next one. Perfect, thank you. Ordinance 2009-10 established an overlay for the site, which included the proposed development of a 38-unit detached single-family rental community with the use of low-income housing tax credits. The development did not receive the tax credits and was never constructed. The property owner, Mr. Jay Zhang, is asking for the removal of the overlay. The property was in use as a mobile home park prior to the establishment of the overlay and is still in use as a mobile home park. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on January 29, 2024, and recommended approval of the application with the following conditions. Mobile homes moved onto the site after rezoning shall be placed a minimum of 20 feet apart. Each mobile home site must have a border on the access road in the mobile home park, and each mobile home shall have a placard displaying the address of each mobile home. The placards shall be placed on the outer wall facing the access road of the mobile home park. So what you're looking at on the screen here is the ordinance is on the right, and the site plan for the development is on the left. So if the development had received their tax credits and built out, this is what it would look like. We'll move on to the next one. Perfect. And this is a rendering of what the units would have looked like. So again, what was approved was single-family detached. To the next one. This is an aerial view of the property. The blue line bordering it is the property lines. To the next one. This is a better aerial view with a little bit better quality showing what's there. But there are 50 mobile homes on the site currently. These are the recommended conditions by the staff. One more. Perfect. So going through the zoning and the use of the neighborhood. So to the north is general business. It is in operation as a convenience store. And then across Fair Lake Road is a non-conforming mobile home park. To the east, you have heavy industrial, which is in operation as the nutrient fertilizer distribution terminal. To the south, you have heavy industrial and general business, which is in use as a public works complex and a concrete plant. And to the west is single-family residential eight, which is single-family houses. To the next one. When reviewing zoning applications, we look at the current zoning and the uses of the neighboring properties. But another thing that we're charged with is looking at the comprehensive plan and determining the consistency with this comprehensive plan. So what you're seeing is a yellow box around the subject parcel. It's that U-shaped driveway right there. This is in the urban commercial corridor. And I'd like to point to you to page 18 of the comprehensive plan. It says, "There is a need to be able to address the health and safety danger of blighted and neglected mobile homes, as well as site-built homes. While many neighborhoods are stable, there are maintenance issues. Redevelopment programs for dilapidated homes are still in need of funding." To the next one. That's it.
All right, this time, I'd like to ask, is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of the application? All right, so if you would just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Jay Zhang. I'm manager for the mobile home park and one of the owners. And my address is 1249 Kildare Farm Road, Cary, North Carolina. That's my address.
If you would just tell the council what you'd like to tell them about this application.
Oh, current zoning is really just part of a developer effort trying to purchase the park and turn it into a new development. But that attempt was failed due to didn't get the tax credit. So really, the park itself never changed anything. So the reason become an issue that we tried to, tenants tried to do some renovation, and we tried to put in some new mobile homes, and then realized we cannot do that because of current zoning. So current zoning is really kind of gets in the way for us to do regular maintenance plus keep up what need to be done there. So that's why I'm kind of in favor of this zoning amendment to be approved. Also, thank you, everybody here, for what you do for the city, for the people here.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Mayor Council, it would be noted for the conference, I say that public hearing be closed.
I'd like, I do have some questions of the property owner.
Sure.
If you don't mind, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How many lots are you currently renting? I counted about 60 or so on the map. Is that correct? Is that a correct number?
Total lots is 60.
Uh huh.
Occupied lots is 49. But there is one actually, one additional in question right now. He is halfway through renovation but stopped right now, waiting for this to fit, for this zoning change. So you can see 49 actually occupied, or 50 actually we have a rental lease.
Okay. Are the homes that the people are renting, do the people own the homes, or do you own the homes?
Most of them is owned by the people occupy them right now.
Okay.
To be exact, we own about 12 or 11 right now.
And then what's your approximate, kind of average rent? I don't need an exact for each one, but what would be an overall average of those 49 that are occupied? What's the average rent that those people are paying?
You're talking about lottery rent, right?
Come, all of it. If it's yours, if it's theirs, what would be sort of an average? Or you can separate it out if that would be easier.
Well, lottery rent is by average about $240 a month.
Okay. And then what's your average rent?
And for the mobile home rent is, most of our mobile home is brand-new ones. So you're talking about probably, I would say, brand-new one about $750, $745. The older one, we have two of them, is around $600.
Okay. And you've owned this property for how long?
Since 2007.
Okay. So you're making almost a quarter of a million dollars a year in rent.
I'm sorry, can you?
I said, you're making almost a quarter of a million dollars in rent, based on the math that you just gave me. Have you driven through your mobile home park lately?
I'm sorry?
Have you driven through your mobile home park lately?
Of course I do.
Have you seen the deplorable conditions that are in your mobile home park that people are having to live in and paying you rent? It's deplorable.
Well, compared to 2007, they-
Not compared to anything. I'm talking about compared to today. It is deplorable. I rode through there today. It is awful. I would challenge you to spend a week in one of your mobile homes that you call rental housing and see how you fare. You are making a quarter of a million dollars a year. How much money have you reinvested into this mobile home park?
Every dime.
Really?
Yes.
You could provide receipts for us to show that you've invested a quarter of a million dollars a year back into this mobile home park. What have you done?
Well, first, it's not a quarter million dollars to begin with.
I'm just basing off the number that you've given me.
Yes, I know that.
And this is ballpark. This is ballpark.
To begin with, when we first picked up, well, I don't know how much time we have here.
We got all the time we need.
All right. We begin with, when we first picked up this park, we got really deceived by the seller back then. We overpaid the park, and we ended up with the two mortgages with that seller. And we actually have to end up with go to court to get one of these mortgage off. So we began with big expenses. And then, back then, we have about 30 tenants at that time, 30, 35, like that. And we have about 20 mobile homes dilapidated. And we have drug dealers. We have all that prostitute, you name it. And I'm not actually, I was, back then, immediately, I have to kind of borrow money. I ended up almost bankrupted. I have to borrow money everywhere to actually keep up the plumbing, everything going on there. At the same time, I have to evict out all those bad tenants. So to begin with, we ended up a lot of debt to start. And then over the year, we replaced, we stopped metered that place and changed all the tenants gradually. Of course, it has to be gradual process. Also, get rid of the trash, remove the, continuously cutting trees, shrubs, and repair the fences as a way we can. Remember, all this, we cannot get any money from the bank. Actually, the bank-
You've got rent money coming in, sir, and it's deplorable.
I know, I know. I'm not finished yet. Actually, all, in the process, we try to save the money to do the road. The road doesn't look that much, but every two or three years, we have to spend anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000, just to keep the way it is right now. You probably don't believe, I can have a receipt to show you.
I don't. I'm sorry, but I don't.
Yes.
I saw nothing in your mobile home park that looks like it has been addressed in years.
Just to give you an example, like a couple of months, last October or November, we actually had sewer backup. Actually, the problem is caused by the city man's sewer there. But at that time, I have tenant has sewer backup right there. I cannot find, call any of your maintenance people. So I ended up just call the local plumber.
So nobody answered the phone when you called City Hall and said, "I've got a problem with the sewer"?
Well, it's just not soon enough, I'm sorry. Immediately, my plumbing be over $2,000 right there. I'm not saying this happen every day. It's just a reality we are facing.
Sir, I also own investment property.
Yes.
I would never keep my property the way that you keep this property.
Well, we can't go over each property. I can show you which one we own, which one we don't.
It doesn't matter, they all are deplorable. There's trash everywhere. There are animals running wild. There are abandoned cars with flat tires. There are broken windows. There are boarded-up doors. There is the underpinning, the quote, underpinning under the mobile homes is falling apart and deteriorating. You've got one mobile home that the roof is collapsing in this way because you've put two mobile homes end to end. It's deplorable. And to think that the people of this community have that to live in, it's very upsetting to me. And I, how you could go, come to this body and ask us to change something so that you can bring more mobile homes in, I'm just appalled by that. I'm appalled to see how these people have to live, and they're paying you good rent money. So I'm just asking you, what are you doing with all of that money? You're not investing that money back into this park. I challenge you with that. If you can show me receipts, then I will recant this, and I will publicly apologize. But I'm telling you, it's deplorable. And I was appalled with what I saw when I rode through your park today. And you should be ashamed of yourself. You don't live in this community. Sir, you live in North Carolina. You're an absentee landowner. And we are battling that every day in this community. There are people who work hard to pay you that rent money, and that's the condition they have to live in? I'm embarrassed by that for those citizens that live in that mobile home park.
Well, I agree with your assessment, but I am not sure about your reasoning behind that.
That's fair.
Just use the two example right now. I actually was in, one, just finished two renovations right there. We bought 2019 putting there. One mobile home tenant move out, we spent over $5,000, just finished renovating. We're talking about three-years-old mobile home.
And your permit, and your permits for that were issued by who?
Of course, we have every permit, yes.
Okay.
And actually, we just finished another one, which I can show you receipt everything, the contractor worked on that. It's over $7,000.
I'd like to see that. Because I guarantee you, it's not in that mobile home park. So I'll stop my questions if any of the other gentlemen have any questions. I think you get my point.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that is in my district, and I do ride by that mobile home park every day. And I can attest to it as well. That mobile home parks can be-
I'm sorry, can you speak a little?
I said, that is in my district, and I ride by that mobile home park every day. And that mobile home park hadn't had any work done to it in a long time. And we get a lot of activity that we don't need in the city. So, you know, it's just, I mean, I understand, I have rental property as well. And I know, I mean, I work on them, and I try to get the best living condition, because if I can't lay in it, I don't want anybody else to lay in it. So, I mean, that's just the reality of it. I mean, and I hope you would want to be a part of Tifton and really went invest in it the right way. And so, I mean, you know, we got a couple of weeks to think about that. So just really consider that. I mean, you talk about human beings. Would you go sleep in there? Would you go lay in the mobile home park today?
I'm sorry?
Would you go sleep in one of your mobile homes today? I mean, just yes or no?
You need to. When I just started running the park, I almost, every time I go there, I sleep in my own, in my own mobile homes over there.
Okay.
I bring my own kind of bed with me, because I was really broke back then. I just can't afford go to local hotel or motel. I just sleep in my own place.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I mean, like she said, okay, I'm not going to reiterate the situation, but, I mean, our police chief is right there. I'm sure we get calls at that mobile home park quite a bit, right? Yes. So, it's, I mean, yeah. So let's just think about it.
Sure.
Just really think about what you're asking us right now. You know, because that's just hard on us right now. We're not, we don't want people to live like that in Tifton, not in the city. So, not anywhere, anywhere on earth. I wouldn't want to stay in there.
I wouldn't either.
So just, I mean, like I say, just consider what we're saying. And I mean, I hate that we might be coming off that way to you, but, I mean-
Our, one of our responsibilities as city officials is to look out for the safety and well-being of the people that live in this community. And the people that live in your neighborhood are not safe. Their dwellings aren't safe, their surroundings aren't safe. And you need to think about that.
Are we talking about-
As you go back to North Carolina.
Are we talking about Sand Park?
We're talking about Red Bird Mobile Home Park on Fair Lake Road. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We are.
I come here every month, and I talk to my people almost every other day. You probably don't think not much look there, but all my home has been kept up. If you don't believe me, you can send anybody at any moment, we can go take a look.
We did that, we've already done that ourselves. So, any other questions, gentlemen?
I guess my question would be, so, moving forward, you're asking us to make a change for you. What is your idea of being proactive and making a change at the mobile home park?
Well, to begin with, first thing, first worry I have right now is the Latin 59 tenant. They are halfway through their renovation and got stopped because of this zoning situation we have here. That's for him.
Who stopped them? Code enforcement?
By code enforcement.
Okay.
He wasn't permitted.
Yeah, just for clarification, they were doing work. It's considered non-conforming because there was a PDO, and there was not a permit pulled. So code enforcement and our chief building official issued a stop work order.
Let me ask you a question. So if there was a stop work order done on that, you just a few minutes ago said that you had pulled some permits on some other mobile homes. So is that correct?
See, that again, I'm sorry, I didn't put my hearing aid today.
I said, just a few minutes ago, you said you were talking about a different mobile home that you pulled permits on. Is that correct? To do remodeling on, that you spent $7,000 on?
Oh, those mobile homes we purchased back in 2019 and 2020. When we're talking about renovation, really, people, when people moving out, that just trashed the place, had to replace vinyl and cabinet door and, you know, punched the hole on the wall, stuff, situation like that.
So the last major renovation that you're speaking of was 2019, 2020, right?
No, those trailer, we bought in 2019 and 2020. The renovation we're talking about right now, I haven't finished one of them yet.
Have we had any code violations over in that trailer park?
Yeah, that would be my next, that would be my next concern is that, is, I mean, are all the houses or the mobile homes over there, do they meet code? And I guess that would be a question.
No, they don't. As the mayor said, we were over through today and looked at it. There's a lot of code violations, a lot of things that need to be taken care of.
So I definitely think that's something that we probably should take into consideration is maybe look at, first and foremost, what kind of code violations you have.
What?
First and foremost, I think we should look at what code violations you have on some of the mobile homes.
Of course, we welcome you to inspect any of mobile home we own over there. That's no problem.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
Since I kind of follow your question a second ago. Actually, next big step on my agenda is to repave that road and to fix that fence. But paving that road right now costs over $100,000. So we are kind of trying to save money to do that. Since getting finance for mobile home parks is pretty difficult in this day. That's why, the first thing I don't like is the, probably like you probably noticed that drive on the park road. Used to be, we have a lot of trees, that tree would just go underneath the road, that buckled the road over there. So that's a big first on my agenda, and next would be fence. As far as the home, we have kept up. Of course, if you don't feel comfortable or need to inspect, of course, anytime.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, all right, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You have a seat.
Thank you.
I think there was no other comment on that public hearing. I asked if that be closed. Ask if that be closed.
That's fine, yeah, thank you.
The next public hearing we have is the application PP 23-0071. It's a proposed amendment to the City of Tifton's Land Development Code, Table of Uses, as well as Section 2.0303 on daycares, kindergartens, and nurseries, and family childcare learning homes. Again, I like to ask the conflict questions to council. Have any of these advocates or opponents, the application contribute at least $250 to any campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning, reclassification of the property, or proposed text amendment, whether it's a positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning, reclassification of the property, or the proposed text amendment, whether it's a positive or negative impact?
No.
Again, I ask Ms. Kelly, you should come up and explain what this application is about.
Thank you. Thank you. City, city staff were asked to review the current regulations for daycares. As it currently stands, daycares are permissible in all zoning districts within the city, with the exception of heavy industrial. City staff propose updating the table of uses with the following changes to the table. So as you can see, on the top table is what's current and it shows that they are permissible. So an S or a P means that they're permissible, subject to the standards of that code section that's listed right below it. So across the top is your zoning districts. You have suburban agriculture, R20, R14, 12, 10, and R8. So R8, R20s are single-family residential zoning districts. We have MR, which is multiple residential. RP is residential professional. Neighborhood commercial is NC. General business is GB. Commercial downtown, and then we have wholesale light industrial. So the current table allows it in all of them, with the exception of heavy industrial. The proposed changes to land development code adds a ta, or adds a use to the table, which is the family childcare learning homes. And we'll go through a definition for that in just a few minutes. But that is less than six kids in a residential home. And then you have daycares, kindergartens, and nurseries. The proposed ordinance has them being permissible in suburban agriculture, multiple residential, residential professional, neighborhood commercial, general business, and wholesale industrial. So the changes from the current to proposed would be no commercial downtown or single-family residential zoning districts. Perfect. And these are the proposed definitions for daycares, kindergartens, and nurseries, and then family childcare learning homes, which is a home that has less than six children. Perfect. That is the proposed and draft ordinance. I have copies. Planning and zoning reviewed these on January the 8th and unanimously recommended approval of the proposed ordinance.
Is anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition to the proposed application? There'll be no further public comment, I should be closed.
Okay, all right, thank you, Rob. All right, so that does conclude our three public hearings. And so at this point, we will call to order our council workshop. I do want to remind you that at the workshop, which is normally held on the first Monday of the month, today, February the 5th, we are discussing items that will be voting on at our regular council workshop on the third Monday. So tonight will be for discussion only and, and then we'll be voting at our next council meeting. So the meeting is called to order. The only thing that we will actually vote on is the approval of our agenda. Excuse me. So gentlemen, you have that before you, so I'll take a motion concerning that approval.
We approve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, so that carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, under new business, I'm going to call on our city clerk, Jessica White. This is the resolution designating Rhythm and Ribs as a festival. So Jessica?
This is Rhythm and Ribs, which has been happening for a few years now. And so they are again requesting to utilize the festival ordinance and allow alcohol to be sold and on premise within the whole park, March 1st and 2nd. It's going to be Friday all the way through Sunday, but sales only Friday and Sunday. I mean, Friday and Saturday. So the tourism association's requesting this and we've reviewed it.
Sort of business as usual, isn't it?
Yes, and so.
Okay, all right. Does anyone have any questions about that? Like I said, it's business as usual. We do this each year and looking forward to a great Rhythm and Ribs 2024. All right, moving along, our next item is the authorization for the purchase and financing of the new fire truck, new rescue pumper truck. I'll call on our finance director, Larry Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're in the process of purchasing another new fire truck. It was in the budget for this year, but when we're looking at it, we're recommending that we use the GMA leasing those funds because our interest rate that we earn on our funds in the bank keep going up. So it's better for us to gain that little bit of money because, but as, as the interest rates start, start coming down, we can pay off this with no penalties though.
Right.
But right now, we can earn a little bit more with the funds that we have in the bank so we can utilize the loan with GMA leasing.
Okay, any questions, gentlemen, on that process? Okay. All right, Larry, go ahead and, and let you talk about the resolution authorizing the new Georgia Fund Investment Account.
All right, well, presently, on our general fund, we have a Georgia Fund One where we get a very good interest rate. And we were just wanting to open up two other Georgia Fund One, one for Water Fund and another one for the SPOX 6 Funds, where we can utilize those, those funds in the Georgia Fund One. We have to keep them separate, so we have to open up two, two new funds there.
Yeah.
And to be able to get the, the good interest rate on that, those funds, so.
Okay, all right.
And just to reiterate that, we would, we're proposing to move $10 million from the Water Fund. This is a joint enterprise fund with the county. I've spoken to the county manager, who is okay with moving these funds there based on the 5.3% interest rate we will be getting versus the 4.1% interest rate we're getting right now at Ameris. And then an additional $10 million from SPOX 6. So a total of $20 million in two different investment accounts at a 5.3% interest rate.
Okay, that's right. All right, any questions?
5.39.
5.39.
There you go. That's worth me?
That's right.
That's right, okay. Any questions, guys? You're good, okay, thank you. Thank you, Larry, for that information. All right, next I'm going to call on our city manager, Emily Beaman. She's going to talk to us about updating our service delivery strategy for housing revitalization.
So one of the requirements for the 2024 Community Development Block, Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG in our alphabet soup that we live in, one of the things we have to do, since we are writing our narrative to improve housing and revitalization of housing, is to include this in the services delivery strategy that is joint with the county through the Department of Community Affairs. What we are venturing to do is to update the service delivery strategy to include housing revitalization. It will focus on the elimination of blight, new affordable housing developments, and assistance to private homeowners, developers, and individuals through programs such as the Community Development Block Grant, the Community Home Investment Program, also known as CHIP, and the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, the GIC program, and other related efforts. This does not include public housing authorities. So this would allow for a wider range of grant opportunities for the city to focus on workforce housing and housing revitalization. So we're just asking for approval from you guys to be able to update service delivery, to offer housing revitalization. And then I will be at the county meeting tomorrow to present to the commissioners the same, same initiative.
Okay. And gentlemen, as you know, we, we update service delivery every 10 years, but as long as both parties are in agreement, we can, we can amend, which is basically what we're doing. So, so this is a good, good program. We've already stated that people deserve to have fair, safe housing and safe neighborhoods. And so I hopefully, I feel like the county will probably be supportive in that. I don't think there'll be any issues. Any questions you have, gentlemen, on updating or changing, amending that service delivery? Good, okay. All right, thank you, Emily. Excuse me. Our next item on the agenda, our next three items are the public hearings that we've just, we can discuss the public hearing information. The first one is on the non-emergent medical transport service and the non-emergent transport vehicles. Does anyone have any questions, Crystal or Rob or Emily on those? Y'all good?
Haven't they, haven't we had something like that there before?
Yes, they were kind of out of compliance with our standards. This is just updating the tech, so everybody will be in compliance going forward. It's, Crystal's actually had a few people reach out to her about additional services throughout the community. And just as long as it fits the correct zoning, we need to have this text in our, our codes to be able to reference that.
There you go.
That's right. The closest thing we have was the taxi cab service. And although it's very similar, it is not a taxi cab service. So we just need to, to define that.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, all right. And then the next item on our agenda is the zoning application by Mr. Zhang and Annie Yan on the Redbird Mobile Home Park. Is there any further discussion, questions that we need?
Mayor, could I make some clarifications? Just make sure everybody understands what, what's happening here.
Yeah.
Basically, as Crystal was saying, you know, this was initially mobile home park, which made it, it was a conforming use. When he put the P D O overlay on it, that made it a non-conforming use. When you have a non-conforming use, you can't expand, extend your mobile home park because it's non-conforming, which means that you cannot, you know, make repairs to any mobile home that exceeds 50% of the value of that mobile home. So in some instances, you may, in a non-conforming use situation, you may have a non-conforming park with a dilapidated trailer and the cost to repair it exceeds 50%, therefore you cannot repair it. If council were to remove the P D O overlay and became a mobile home park, as it always has been, then it's a conforming use again, which means then that the owner or, or the owner of the trailers, the owner of the park, can make repairs to the mobile home irrespective of the 50, 50% cap. So I think what you have here is really kind of two issues. You know, whether or not to have it zoned as a mobile home park with the conditions as suggested. And then you also, from what I'm hearing, you have code issues. So I think you really have, you know, you have two separate issues here. Should it be rezoned and removed the P D O because it didn't, it didn't work out for Mrs. Zhang? And then is there issues with, with code? And if there are, of course, those would be code violations that can be addressed by code and through municipal court. One of the things that we addressed when we were at the planning and zoning meeting was that, you know, certainly we had these hopes and expectations for new mobile home parks, so whether they'd be decent, we'd have roads and, and space. We felt that even though it might go back to a mobile home park, if we put conditions on the mobile home park, condition on the rezone, then we could address some of the issues that we felt were public safety issues, such as distance between mobile homes. I just read something the other day where, I think a plane might have crashed into a mobile home and next thing you know, you've got four mobile homes on fire. So that's why we thought that the 20-foot distance, and we looked at numerous other cities about distance requirements between mobile homes. And we kind of looked at 20 because that was kind of in the middle of what they were requiring. So we thought that that would be a safety issue and, and new mobile homes that, that may go into the park would have to comply with that distance requirement. The other thing was the placards. We felt that it was important, if there's a fire, fire department can find which mobile homes you were at. And the other thing was the setback. You had to be on the front edge, that way you not having stacked mobile homes behind it. So I just want to kind of give you a little insight about what was going on at planning and zoning, what we're dealing with as far as, you know, a rezone back to mobile home park, and then you have the code issues that can also be dealt with. So I just want to kind of give you the.
It's a hot mess over there. And it's, it's more than just the cost of repair. If there's a mobile home in there that's worth $10,000, I'll be shocked. So to say you couldn't spend over $5,000, you know, without this change, I don't think 50 cents has been spent since 2007.
Emily, that may be true.
I know.
And I just want to kind of, I want to give you an idea about the $10,000 for view about what we're dealing with.
You know, the amount of trash, the amount of disrepair, of just, and it's not just the homes. It's the whole kit and caboodle. It's disgusting and it's, it's deplorable. That's the only word I can think of to, I don't, I mean, kick a dead horse, but anyway. But thank you for that explanation.
What is the, what is the distance currently between the, the mobile homes that are, that are there?
It's, it's about that.
20 feet?
He's roughly that. Mr. Zhang actually measured, I think about 2013. He measured a lot, he measured the lots that were out there and most of them are averaging around 10,000. He had one or two that was close plenty, but most of them were plenty or more. And then I think he has about 10,000 vacant lots.
We used to have a lot more, he updated it from, we've done demolish and removed a lot of the property.
All right, that concludes all of our items on our agenda. So we'll go to.
I think, yeah, daycares?
Daycares.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had marked it off while you were talking, I'm sorry, and then flipped it over, I'm sorry. Item number 10. When Emily was doing like this, I thought she was saying stop. Item number 10, and that's on our, the amendments to the City's Land Development Code concerning daycares, kindergartens, and nurseries, family childcare learning homes. Any questions on that particular item, gentlemen? Good, clear on that? Okay, okay. All right, I'm sorry about that. I had marked it off and then flipped my paper. So that does conclude our official business. So now we are on to other business. So I'll call on Emily for her city manager report.
Okay, I do have a few things tonight. An update on the park. The equipment is there, it is installed. We are still waiting on the rubber padding to be laid out for us. We're hoping to see some movement on that very soon. We're looking at the end of February to be completely finished with all of it. To the public, please refrain from going into and playing on the playground equipment until we are completely finished with it. Once we begin to pour the padding out there, we do have an open window where it has to be cured. So we've seen some people out there playing. So to the public, please don't play on that until we get completely finished with it. I would like to publicly announce the Citizens Police Academy with our police department. This is something really neat that we are starting this year. Applications are due to the police chief by February 14th. This academy will go from February 20th to March 26th. It'll be a six-week program on Tuesdays from 6:30 to 9:00 at the police department. During this program, each week you have a different topic that you'll learn about. You will have police ride-alongs, traffic enforcement, crime scene processing, gang awareness, drug investigations, handgun safety, just to name a few of the topics they will go over. This is really neat that we are, our police chief is offering this, an inside look to our police department for the community. So that's really neat. If anybody's interested, they can complete an application and return that to the police chief as long as they meet the requirements that are listed. This is on social media and I believe on our website for anybody to complete. The next thing I have, as we're talking about housing revitalization with service delivery strategy, one of the things that we are doing was the CHIP grant that we have, the Community Housing Improvement Program. We have got our second house that's been selected. It is at 1109 South College Circle. What they are looking at doing is complete upgrade to the electrical system, install new HVAC, install a new hot water heater on the exterior, two storm doors, front and back, double-pane thermal insulated windows all around the house, repair, prep, and paint the front porch ceiling, install a new shower unit, install new ceiling exhaust fan, just some of the few things that we're doing to revitalize these neighborhoods. And this was initiative of U R A as we look at housing revitalization. This does fall in the U R A boundary as well as District 3, Councilman Cromer's district. So this is our second house. We're very excited to be able to bring up the living conditions of the community as this is a focus and a goal for the council is to enhance our neighborhoods and be aware of what our community is living in. And then lastly, I would just like to say that this weekend is Second Saturday. Hillary, our Main Street manager, has done a phenomenal job. You will see these brochures in downtown. You can see all the events that are happening in February and a few in March, as well as a local dining guide to those that are not from here. They can see where they can shop and eat. She has also implemented a Valentine's loyalty card. So if you're shopping downtown, pick up your loyalty cards. For every $20 you spend, you will get signatures on the back. Once you've spent $100, you will turn this into City Hall and you will go into a draw. Once you've spent $100, you will turn this into City Hall, and you will go into a drawing for a $150 valued gift basket for downtown shopping. So, get out and get all your Valentine's stuff in downtown Tifton.
Perfect.
And that's all I got.
All right, thank you for that, that's a good report. Gentlemen, Mayor and Council comments? Does anybody want to jump in there?
I'm, I'm good enough.
Okay. Good, okay. M J, I'd like to, on behalf of the council and the city organization, offer our very sincere
Yeah.
Condolences for your mom.
Yeah.
Joyce Mintz is a special, special, special lady. And she did so much for this community, and she is going to be greatly missed. And she raised a very fine son. And I'm so thankful that she knew Milo, and I'm so thankful that she got to see a lot of the things that you've done, M J, on this city council. And just know that we're with you, and we will be there tomorrow. And if you need anything, please let us know, that we're, we are all lifting you, your family, lifting you up in prayer. And just know that we're with you, and we love you, and we care about you, and we'll miss your mom, just as you will. And if you need anything from us at all, we're right here, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Michael, I left it at that, so you're next.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Good, M J?
Yeah.
All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.